Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with thankfulness for all of the blessings that you have given us. We appreciate the opportunity to live in this great city. Lord, we pray for those who are in leadership here in our state, in our country, and around the world. You give them wisdom, guidance, and discernment. Lord, we pray for those in our community who are hurting, for those who are orphaned, widowed, those who are in need. Lord, we pray that you would just bless them. And we pray that the things that we would do here this evening would be pleasing unto you, that you would keep us mindful of what you would have us to do. And as we leave here, please watch over us and keep us safe. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, before we have a motion, item I has been withdrawn by the applicants. So, other than that, I would consider a motion to...
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 1D, please.
1D.
For discussion.
Okay. Anyone else?
We adopt the vendor.
Commissioner Harrod moved we adopt with the exception of item D. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Item D.
Okay, well, I just need educated by Justin or Justin. On the RFQ on page 1 and 2, it doesn't cite planning and engineering firms. It does just say qualified consultants. Was there a reason we left off planning and engineering from as language?
Another portion of the document, I think, included that. That would have been a good place to cover it out here more specifically.
Okay. And I noticed we do have a budget for that. And is there a list of potential vendors? And do you go through the State of Oklahoma's central services for those vendors? Or how do you go about getting that type of vendor?
We will publicize this, and then we will also be emailing some copies to known vendors in the Oklahoma, probably kind of region, Dallas region as well. What we've done also with the website redesign project is that these vendors actually do a really good job finding you as well, because they're able to set up Google Alerts and so on. And this will get posted on the city's website, and that alone allows it to then become searchable as part of a Google search or another search engine process. And so, we were kind of surprised at how many responses we got despite a more limited advertisement with the website. We even have more firms that are known to us in this instance. So, I don't think getting a list of qualified firms will be especially challenging.
Okay. And who might be on the city review committee? I noticed that that language had been placed in there, Justin.
Sure, sure. So, if the call planned, at least the way that we did the last time, was put out, it was in about 2005, there was most definitely inclusion of elected officials, members of the city commission, planning commission, and the other citizen committee, too, that we can have on there as well.
I'd certainly suggest legal counsel. Thank you. That's all I have here.
Is there a motion to adopt item D?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Salter. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six eyes. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you would like to speak, approach the podium, introduce yourself, and sign in and speak Seeing none. Item three, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan for Kevin Moody.
We approve it.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries with six eyes. Item four, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of the city commission and related authorities amended schedule of regular meetings for 2018. This deals with moving the meetings to 6:00 as well as the schedule?
Yes, sir. This is the 2018 calendar, so should the commission choose to do it sooner than that, for instance, the two meetings in December, then we could have an action item on the next agenda. I believe we may need to do something else to ratify this, or is this sufficient, Joe, just to publish an amended?
This is efficient.
Okay.
Because it's approved as an action item.
Perfect. So, this action item, if approved, then that does officially change our time to 6:00 PM from 6:30 effective January 16th. Just a reminder that, as we have for the last three or four years, we've canceled the first meeting in January because of its proximity to the New Year holiday. And so...
Any discussion, questions, Justin? Is there a motion?
I don't want to...
It's kind of like school, where the teacher's looking at you. Motion by Commissioner Rutherford, second by Commissioner Salter. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries five ayes and one abstention. Item five, consideration of a resolution to declare certain items surplus property and authorizing the sale of said items at auction or disposal at the city's discretion.
In your package is a list of items that, you know, the city's been storing up for quite a while.
A year.
Yeah, at least. And this is, we just do this in conjunction with another auction that's going on at the Expo Center. You know, they auctioned it off for us. Anything that brings over $1,000 doesn't bring a fee to us, but anything that doesn't bring $1,000 is a 10% fee to us. They take all that out before they rise to check. And this is to auction, and whatever's left disposed of as we see fit.
Any questions?
I do have a question in regard to the language on the resolution. I would like to make a suggestion, but I need legal clarification on this, Joe, if you would, in regard to, it says of said items by public auction or disposal at the city's discretion, yet later in the body of the document, it says said items may be disposed at the city's discretion. Could we have a language change and possibly do by public auction or may be disposed of at the city's discretion?
By public auction or may?
May be disposed at the city's discretion. Otherwise, to me, it gives implied authority for that to be disposed of instead of sold in the first language or auctioned.
Maybe if I understand, is the intent of your comment that everything be required to be required, that in good faith, attempted to be sold prior to destruction?
That it be auctioned, and if it's not auctioned, then that it not be implied, but that it be expressed, that it would be at the city's discretion as a secondary means, not as the primary.
Okay. James or Justin may be able to speak to this, but I anticipate there are probably certain items that are not placed for auction just because they have no value. Does that behave?
Well, no. Everything on that list goes to auction. And in the event that something doesn't sell, then we don't want to keep it.
Right. So, the suggested language change comports with practice. I mean, it's consistent with past practice.
Yes. We may just have a handful of items that don't sell at the end of the auction, and then we would, like, if it's...
Dispose, recycle.
Dispose, recycle.
I know we had, it wouldn't sell, but a bunch of chores and lives going on. About three pallets, I'm not sure.
Is there a motion?
Joe.
I'm trying to make sure I get it right here.
I'm going to have him read it. If I get the motion, then I've got to have him read the title. Still need a motion.
We approve it.
Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Which, which language?
As amended. The one that's fixing to read.
Guys, to be honest, I'm not certain that, if I understood Commissioner Shaw's amendment correctly, I don't think it accomplishes what the intent was. Because you said by public auction or may be disposed of at the city's discretion, right?
May be disposed of at the city's discretion.
The or, that's just that.
Or with the word or.
So, you just really add may?
Yes, maybe.
But if the intent of it is, I would prefer to see language...
The intent is if it's not sold, then the city can do what they want with it. So, I'd just say that.
Yeah.
Isn't that what that says?
Yeah, in the body of the resolution, the last sentence...
If the language is good as is, then leave it, but I don't see that it clearly states the same thing.
And that was my comment, is the resolution title, while important, is, does not control. The body of the resolution does, and the body of the resolution lays out that framework. So, I think that not only past practice, but also the language of the resolution is consistent with your intent.
Okay, so, it's good as is.
So, the very last sentence states, if any items do not sell at the auction, said items may be disposed at the city's discretion. So, it sets up the framework for the...
Okay. I've always been told now that the intent has to be laid in the initial language of a resolution.
No doubt. I think that's accurate. A layperson should be able to read the title and know what it's talking about. But if there were a dispute, the body of the resolution would control.
Gotcha.
And so, to me, you would, I would read this and see that there's a procedure or a process for auction and disposal of these surplus items. And I would then be prompted to the body of the resolution to see what that is.
All right. As long as the intent is clear, I guess. I disagree with this action.
Okay.
The fact that the language is not going to occur.
Well, I mean, I think that there is a motion to adopt the language. I just want to make sure we've got the right language to satisfy your concern.
Okay.
And so, I don't have a problem clarifying the title, but I think it should say authorizing the sale of items by public auction, and in the event they don't sell, disposal at the city's discretion.
Okay.
That, to me, is much clearer.
Okay. Let's do that.
Okay. Your motion stand? Is there a second?
There is.
Taken by Commissioner Bouchon.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Oh, that's me. Now you get to read it again.
No problem. That's why I'm writing it. "The resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus are no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the sale of said items by public auction, and in the event items do not sell at public auction, disposal at the city's discretion."
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six ayes. Item six, consideration and approval of preliminary plat for Chicken Express, addition located near the intersection of North Harrison Street and 45th Street, case number S-06-17, applicant Amy Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This case is fairly straightforward. The subject property is located south of 45th Street, on the west side of Harrison, and really more generally, this is south of the Car Wash, if you know where that's at, north of the U-Haul. Property is roughly an acre in size, currently zone C3. And once again, really, really straightforward. I'll mention just a few details to you here. So, the city's 10-inch sewer main is about 175 feet to the west. They'll have to extend that and have that dedicated to the public alongside this particular plat. This will also require dedication of easements from the neighbor as well to satisfy that 20-foot total perimeter utility easement that is required. Stormwater detention is completely on-site, and again, with the structure they do show on the preliminary plat, or Exhibit 1 here, staff finds this project to be in conformance with the zoning code, subdivision regulations, and comprehensive plan. I have included five particular conditions of approval for this. The last three are very straightforward ones that we've added to really all plats, but I'll go through the first two here. So, number one, the proposed outlot located at the property's northeast corner shall be corrected and shown as an easement rather than a lot. So, on that northeast corner of the property, there's actually a billboard that they would like to remain with the original property owner, or at least have that access detailed. So, that will have to be as an easement and not as a separate piece of property. And the second condition really accounts for having a fire hydrant within 300 feet of the structure itself. So, without the radius actually being shown and that detailed in the project, I just want to make sure that we're, before we move on to final plat, that that is reconciled. So, if that being said, staff does recommend approval with the five listed conditions.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions?
Justin, was there any letters of concern or public comment?
Great question. I wrote that down. There were no letters of protest. Sorry about that. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval.
Okay. So moved, to accept it with the five conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Bouchon. Call the question. Motion carries six ayes. Now, item seven, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission members. I just want to update you on a couple of items. The full report is on the city's website, and you'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. But the two items I want to focus on tonight, the first one being the household hazardous waste event, which is happening Saturday, November 18th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Central Disposal Site, which is, of course, our normal disposal area for bulk trash and waste. So, it's a convenient place for the public and one that they're very used to. I want to recognize Darren Shields and Daniel Winn from Kikapu Tribe of Oklahoma that are in the audience. You might recall about a month ago, they were here, and we talked about that partnership that we've cemented between the Kikapu Tribe and the City of Shawnee, so that we're able to bring this event to the public. This event will be open to all city residents, as well as any individuals from the Kikapu Tribe that may live outside of the city, or members of the Absentee Shawnee Tribe, who also participated in the project with a generous donation. So, this is a wide partnership between those three entities, as well as Central Disposal. So, we have more information on the website. If you have questions or get questions from the public, please direct them to the website. We have a brochure on there that shows what they will accept, what they're able to accept, and what we can't accept. And if this goes well, our hope is to have this on an annual basis. We looked at what the City of Stillwater does and the City of Norman, and they're able to do this on a regular basis, which is really nice. We would also be looking at extending our partnerships next year as well, so maybe we could offer this in conjunction with Potawatomi County and include the rural residents as well, or citizens of other neighboring cities. This is kind of a test case, so we wanted to keep it relatively small the first go-around. Second item I wanted to update you on was our downtown revitalization work, which is commonly known as our TIP district. And you have seen those resolutions and some information on your agenda before, but that review committee, of course, was established. They met twice in October, October 9th and October 24th. Just a reminder that that committee is set up by statute. It includes members of all taxing jurisdictions, so everybody has a seat at the table. In addition, there's three members at-large. This body appointed those at-large members, or ratified the mayor's selection, and those members were Casey Bell, former mayor Chris Harden, and Tim Burke with Economic Development. And so, after review, the committee recommended approval of a modified project plan and the establishment of a second tax increment financing district downtown. That recommendation was then presented to the Shawnee Planning Commission on November 1st, and I attended that meeting last week. They did unanimously recommend approval to this body. So, you will have that on your agenda. The state law requires two public hearings, and so, on your November 20th city commission meeting and your December 4th city commission meeting, you'll have an opportunity to really dig into the details, and we'll have a formal presentation and be able to really answer any questions that you have at that time and get into the meat of the proposal. But I will say that the committee did great work, and it's somewhat uncommon for there to be kind of unanimous support for a project, because these taxing districts are giving up something in exchange for maybe something greater for the common good. And in this case, that was, that's what happened. The taxing districts all supported the project, and it was a collaborative effort. And so, I think there'll be something in there that everybody likes, including downtown revitalization, a better process to incentivize private development downtown, and then as well as some funding that will be used to partner with the library and with Potawatomi County as well. So, look forward to talking about that more with you the next two meetings. And lastly, this Saturday at 11:00 AM at Wooden Veterans Park, we'll have our Veterans Day ceremony. So, welcome to join us for that event. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Kikapu Tribe for partnering with us on this event. This is an ongoing thing, and I think it's really great that we can do that, and you guys are certainly welcome anytime. Item eight, consider bid, Santa Fe Museum parking lot improvements, contract number
This is the bid opening for the Santa Fe Museum parking lot improvements. We had one bidder. That was from Parathon Construction of Edmond, Oklahoma. The base bid was for $687,727.65. We did have some alternate bids in this. Alternate one was to replace the all-brick pavers under the base bid with a stamped concrete, and that cost would be $524,760. And alternate two bid was to put all just regular concrete, and that is $189,878. And staff would ask to defer this until the next meeting.
Any questions? Is there a motion to defer? Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Rutherford. Any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six ayes. New business?
There is no new business, sir.
Commissioners' comments?
I was going to say, I'm really enlightened by the parks meeting they would have. I think it was very informative. I do understand, and I hope everyone else has a chance, and it is, it is still in the concept mode. No final decisions have been made yet, so it is coming up, input, things like that. So, I'm looking forward to it, and I'm really pleased that you're giving praise.
Thank you.
No call.
No call.
I will be quiet.
Michelle?
We have a number of activities coming up. Bryce didn't mention it, but we've got the pie bake. Is that still happening November 11th? Pioneer Library has Storytime, and there are ESL classes going on. The Shawnee event is the Alpaca Blast Off. I'm never sure how to say that word. So, we've got that, and the Christmas tree lighting is getting ready to happen here on the 17th. For the senior citizens, I'd like to just mention that they've got navigating through Medicare. If you haven't been monitoring a lot of the progress done by the recent Trump administration's actions, please, you might want to attend a meeting like this, because we certainly got some changes that are going to be occurring in the area of Medicare. I would also like to thank those staff who attended the recent Oklahoma American Society for Public Administrators Oklahoma Chapter meeting, which was Cindy and Justin and Tammy. And so, I'd like to just thank all three of you for attending that. Those are leaders, city leaders, as well as a number of administrators across the state who meet and go over a lot of different areas that can help improve city systems, state systems, and a number of other systems. And one final comment, recently I saw an event letter that was sent out, and I would just like to caution anyone who is a contractor to please refrain from making public comments that might state that you support a certain elected official whenever you're under contract with us. So, just as a word of caution, I don't want to get into any potential conflict of interest where it might give the appearance that you are supporting this particular individual based on not their actions, but on the fact they have a contract. So, just a word of caution, and that's all I have. Thank you.
No comment. Welcome to the chamber's leadership class, those of you that are here. Appreciate your attendance. This meeting is adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Meeting is called to order. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bouchon, second by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any discussion?
Actually, I do have a question there, and I apologize for the delay on that. Could we pull item 1B for discussion?
Does your motion stand, absent item 1B? Is there a second? Motion, call the question, absent item 1B. Motion carries six ayes. Item 1B.
Okay. Well, my question on this is, since someone, Justin or Justin, or someone, educate me, since that, the airport authority has approved this on 10/25 for the agreement for this, I guess, this particular agreement, is there a reason that the date reflects October 19th instead of 10/25? Or will the action later on... reflects October 19th instead of 10/25? Or will the action later on, considering we're getting ready to approve this, or it's up for consideration, supersede the fact that we've got a date saying that the agreement was entered into October 19th?
Well, you're approving the agreement. If it's ratified today or approved today, it may be effective as of the date of the agreement.
Okay. So, we don't, we're good with it being, okay. All right. That was my question.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Yeah.
Commissioner Salter, call the question. Motion carries six eyes. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir. There's no.
This meeting is adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any questions? Call the question. Motion carries six eyes. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.